We'll call the meeting to order of the City of Atwater City Council, April 28, 2014, at 6:06. Please stand for the pledge allegiance led by Mayor Protem Mooneyham. Please remain standing for the invitation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you to give you praise and glory and to come before you as humble servants. Lord, we thank you for the many blessings that you provide for us. Father, we thank you for the recent rain that you've given to us and how well it prospers the ground and continues to provide life for our community. Father, we thank you for our city council and for the staff that serve our community so willingly. Lord, then we thank you for our first responders. Lord, we ask that you continue to send your angels to encamp around them and protect them as they serve our community. Lord, we're so thankful for the cooperation that we have within our community, how they come together to bring glory and praise to you in the work that they do. Lord, send your Holy Spirit to be with us this evening, provide for us your wisdom, the ability to cooperate, the ability to understand and to accept different points of view, but at the same time to recognize that you made us all different and that we can continue to work together. Lord, we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Roll call.
Bergman.
Here.
Mooneyham.
Here.
Jeff Rivera.
Here.
Joe Rivera is absent.
Paul.
Here.
We have a forum. Please remember to turn off all of your cellphones tonight. Please also to remember that if you need to visit with someone, please do it outside because please remember that respect the people who are at the podium and at the dais. Approval of the agenda as posted or amended? This is the time in which the city council may remove an item from the agenda or change the item or the order of the agenda. I'd like to tonight, as I did last meeting, because we didn't have a full council and this item requires a full council's input to remove item number seven, agenda item seven, for the next meeting. Councilman Bergman.
Thank you, Mayor. I will agree to that when it comes to that point, but I would like to request that we leave that number on there. We may have citizens that came here tonight specifically to comment on this issue, so I would like at least to keep the public comment period open so they can at least voice their opinion. They have that right, and I would ask that we leave the public comment period on there.
City Attorney, is that -- can we do that?
Just continue it.
Yeah, you can, and what we would suggest then is that the staff not give their full report on the item, but just instead, if there are citizens who are here tonight who came to speak on this item and may not be able to participate at the next meeting, that they could offer their touch of body tonight.
Hello?
Some of them just left. But if they can hold their comments to the next meeting because they'll be here, the council can consider their comments at that time as well. But no staff report and no action.
Okay, no action, no staff report. Okay? Thank you.
Right, and the item, without any further motion to the council, will be continued to the next meeting.
Will be continued to the next meeting.
That would be the motion we need.
Is there any other -- do I have a second to my motion? What?
You're not doing that anymore.
I want to withdraw my motion?
So now the motion would be to direct to go forth with the agenda as modified in the discussion.
Okay. I move that we go forward with the agenda item as modified and as discussed. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Seconded by Mr. Bergman. Councilman Jeff Rivera.
I was going to ask Mr. Terpstra, if we were to pull that item off, people would still be able to comment on the allotted time for comments from the public, correct?
That is also correct. It's up to the council how you want to handle it. You can leave it on as it is with the right for the public to comment at that time, or you can direct the public to make their comments during the public discussion. Either way, it would be fine.
Mr. Bergman, Councilman Bergman.
My only thought in going with this route is we do have some individuals that like to give opinions on several items, and this could be a lengthy discussion, so that's why I asked to have two separate. So they'd still have the opportunity to come up during public comment to discuss other items, and then when this came forward, they could come up and discuss it, the term limits at that time, so it doesn't take all their time prior.
The thing that it -- this is still on the agenda, so that would keep -- that would focus those persons who wish to comment on this item to item number seven, the way I understand it, and then the comments from the public, that's just for items that are not on the agenda. That's the way I understand it. Okay. We have a motion on the floor. We have a second. Call for the question. Mooneyham?
Yes.
Bergman?
Yes.
Jeff Rivera?
No.
Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries. It is again. Okay, approval of -- let's see, we've done the approval of the agenda, so we'll move down to the next one, which is the mayor or city attorney's report out from closed session. No reportable action was taken. Staff was given direction. The next item on our agenda is presentations, and we're having presentations to our Fireman of the Year, Arturo Vargas. We're having -- representing Love Atwater, and then we are also going to be recognizing Mr. Creighton. So we will start with Chief Pimentel and Arturo Vargas and his family, if they're here. Firefighter Vargas, congratulations. Job well done to be selected as the City of Atwater Certificate of Recognition awarded to 2014 firefighter Vargas, Fireman of the Year, Fire Apparatus Engineer, Arturo Vargas, for his accomplishments, his devotion to duty, service to the public, and bringing positive commendation to the department. Job well done. Chief Pimentel, would you please give us a little background on our firefighter of the year?
Arturo Vargas works at our Station 42, which is out on Avenue 2 out there by the Buhat Colony School. He's come to us, been there probably two years now, and last year, as once I've taken my position as the chief here, I've noticed his outstanding, you know, work he does there at the station, always willing to help out. He's always been somebody we can count on and be there for the rest of the folks, and when we all came together to decide, it was a unanimous decision to pick Arturo Vargas as our firefighter of the year in City of Atwater. So we're very proud and thankful to have him here in the City of Atwater. I just want to say thank you to Chief Pimentel and all the staff up here. Appreciate the opportunity to serve the community. Thank you.
We are very honored to have this young man to serve our city and the City of Atwater, and job well done, and we just appreciate it, all that you do and you have done and keep doing it. That's the main thing.
Thank you very much. You appreciate it.
Thank you. The next group that we will be recognizing are the Love Atwater Group, and that is Mrs. Perez. Please come forward. Pastor Mox, please come forward. Mr. Ferretta, please come forward. See, I think -- all these wonderful people here. This is Mrs. Perez, Gloria Perez. She was the chairperson for the Love Atwater, April 5th. Cannot thank her enough. She, if you ever want a committee and you need a chair, this is the lady. Boy, she got 2,000 people out, I tell ya. It was fantastic. But not quite that many, but she got a lot, that's for sure. And then Pastor Mox, he's always our young man that gets the job done, and he was right there assisting. And then from the city, we have Patrick Ferretta, and we want to thank Patrick for all his extra help, because it was quite a group of individuals that were out there. And Patrick will tell you how many tons they picked up, but it was fantastic. And I'm going to turn it over, and also Gloria has another honor. She was selected by the Atwater Chamber of Commerce for the Volunteer of the Year, and I can't figure out anybody else who would need to be the volunteer of the year at this young lady for all that she's done. So we -- let's give her a round of applause for her extra help. So I'm going to pass the microphone to first Gloria, and then we'll just pass it on down.
Okay, well, thank you so much. It's been an honor to do that, you know. Like I said before, God had placed that in my heart to love on this city, and He just continues to consume me with His love, and I give Him all the glory, and He asks me to be His hands and feet, and I continue to do that, and I was -- it was a blessing that day. If you missed that, we have another one coming up, September 27th, okay? And you can go to our Facebook. We have a Love Atwater website. So the more the mayor, like the mayor said, it was delight. It was nothing but positive, and we, as a team, as a community, can all do something, from young to old. So again, thank you so much.
Thank you. It is an honor to be here tonight to represent not just our volunteer of the year, Gloria, who did head up a great job, but all the many volunteers, not 2,000, but I think somewhere close to 300, which is still impressive enough for me. And it was a wide range of folk from across the community who cared enough to come out and say, "We do love our town, and we want to make it better," and I think that was a great first step. Another one this fall, and encourage -- just encourage volunteerism and taking pride in the community we live in, making it a better place, is what it's about. So thank you to all of you.
Yeah, I just want to take this opportunity to thank Gloria, as well as Pastor Mox, for all their hard work and dedicated service that they provided back on April 5th, I believe it was. My job in this thing was really simple. Alls I had to do was basically provide a list of projects to Gloria, and she assigned her 300 volunteers to all the projects. So really, I deserve no credit. Gloria and John were the ones that were organizers of the event, and I really appreciate your help in getting that done. It's just a lot of things that were -- that the city is unable to take care of on a regular basis. You guys came in and helped us with the cleaning. Speaking of cleaning, we agreed as a city to clean up and pick up the trash of debris and other piles that were left from the cleanup efforts, and when our parks workers took the stuff to the landfill, it weighed in at 2.1 tons of debris and trash and weeds that these folks cleaned up and took out of the City of Atwater, so for that, they should be commended for their efforts, for sure. Thank you again.
A round of applause. This is the way we've succeeded, and we will continue to succeed, is with teamwork. Working together, that's the key. We will succeed, and all of these young men, and Mr. Ferretta, don't count yourself out. You're a key part of making the team work, and we do appreciate that. Gloria, on behalf of the City of Atwater, we want to give you the certificate of appreciation for her outstanding dedication and contribution to beautifying the City of Atwater. Thank you so much. Pastor Mox, I don't know when that -- you know, you're probably the most giving young man I know, and so this is another one of his many projects, and his outstanding dedication, his outstanding contribution, and just his being there, his spirit to get it done, get going, you know, and that spirit that he has. We cannot thank you enough. Just keep up the good work, Pastor Mox, and please don't move.
Okay.
I was just giving the young man a hard time. No, he's planning on staying. Thank you so much.
I'm not moving anywhere as long as she keeps calling me young man. I don't get that as much as I used to, so I appreciate that very much. We do have another project, not a work project, but I will just make mention of it this week on Thursday. May 1st is the National Day of Prayer, and there will be an event that we're inviting all the community to, to come at noon time. We're going to have it right here, if that's -- if that is the plan still, I believe it is. So between noon and 1:00, for anyone who can come, would like to be a part of it. It's open to any and all members of our community. Okay? Thank you.
Again, and give them a round of applause. Thank you so much. Mr. Jeff Rivera, please come down, and Mr. Creighton, please come up. We want to honor this young man, and so we're taking the opportunity tonight to thank him so much for his term of service as our intern public worksman. This man jumped in and just did a great, great job for us. We can't thank him enough for what he's done, he did in his short period of time, and he's still a member of our community, and we will be continuing to volunteer him now. Instead of hire him, we now will volunteer him. And with that, I'm going to pass -- turn it over to Councilman Jeff Rivera.
Thank you. Just wanted to take a few moments to let this man know. We appreciate what he's done in our community. I remember about a year and a half ago, the City of Atwater was trying to move forward with a graffiti abatement. There was a company out of Sacramento, our Mr. Creighton, and the city council decided to hire Mr. Creighton because he told us what a good job he was going to do, and it has obviously paid off for our city. I know that you go above and beyond everything when it comes to taking care of the town, when it comes to graffiti, and when an opportunity was presented to you, you move forward and help the city out as much as you could when it came to our public's work, so I wanted to thank you for that also. So thank you very much for all your dedication.
I also like to thank the entire council and the executive staff, and especially the city manager, Frank Petro. He's a great leader and a great boss, and clear direction, easy to work for, and made it look like I did a really great job, when really he was the brains behind the operation, and I really appreciate it.
I just want to wish this young man luck in his future endeavors. Anything that he does, he does well, and so we just want to give him another round of applause. Thank you again so much. Notice to the public, at this time, any person may comment on any item which is not on the agenda. Please state your name and address for the record. Action will not be taken on an item that is not on the agenda. If it requires action, it will be referred to staff or placed on a future agenda. To comment on an item that's on the agenda, please wait until that item is read for consideration. Please limit your comments to a maximum of three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Jim Price, 3467 Village West. Before I start my comments, I want to publicly acknowledge my condolences to you, Craig. I've felt that same sting in the past several years ago, and it's never easy, and God bless you and your family. Madam Mayor, city council members, ladies and gentlemen of the City of Atwater, there's been a lot of comments that were made over the last 24 hours in the newspaper here concerning, once again, measure H, fire trucks, and all the hoopla that goes with it. One of the good things about living in the United States of America is we have the right to go and say what we want to say and when we want to say it, of course, within certain amount of limits, but the thing I wanted to say is that some of these comments are getting over the top, and some of them are just flat out not accurate. One of the things that is particularly disturbing to me is that, you know, people are kind of taking this personal, and it's not a personal issue, at least not with me. I think that the issue of having, you know, a snorkel fire truck in this town is probably one of the best things that could probably happen to the city. I have no doubts about that. But one of the things that's also overridingly more prioritized in my mind is the fact that we still haven't, at a city council member, or a city council meeting, stood here and watched new officers being sworn in and putting those boots out on the street so that we can, you know, look at it from the standpoint of more protection. And I wanted to go and, you know, kind of emphasize it like this. Let's just kind of play a little game of what if. Well, what if we had a big fire, you know, a big fire tonight, a big fire tomorrow, whatever? Without having that truck here, does that mean that we wouldn't have Merced respond? I don't think so. One phone call from anybody in the city here would get it, you know, to us. That's not to say that, you know, that satisfies the need that certain people feel, but one of the things that Mr. Lee had brought to my attention was the brownout situation in Merced. Fact is, is that the brownout does not affect any of the snorkel trucks, when I researched that. So, you know, that truck is available to us, but the other thing is, is that, you know, we're talking about future needs and future things for Atwater related to the fire truck. My point of all this is, is that the future is now when it comes to crime. Today, tomorrow, every day, there's going to be somebody violating crime to a low level or a high level, whatever, here in the City of Atwater. Are we going to have a big fire tomorrow or all those days? Who knows? It's a possibility, but crime is a reality, and it's something that I feel is going to happen. And if we have an officer that has to arrest him, but to take him into Merced--
You need to sum it up, Mr. Price.
We're going to have somebody in Merced for a couple hours, possibly longer, booking a prisoner, and we can't call in the sheriff of Merced City to backfill that position while they're out, you know, booking somebody in. So I hope we, you know, kind of keep the priorities of keeping us safe and sticking to what we were thinking we were going to get out of measure H as a police-related issue with fire also involved with that.
Thank you.
I'm all for public safety on both sides. Thank you.
Thank you.
James Vineyard, 2401 Canal Drive. The war of police department versus fire department needs to stop. This isn't about the fire department, it's not about the police department. This is about public safety. You can feel your hand, one hand with dirt and what ifs with the other hand, and see which one fills up sooner or whatever. You can what if yourself to death, and nothing will accomplish anything. Public opinion is public opinion. People can wish everything to death. The problem is, you're airing everything out, and you're not leaving what needs to be done to the professionals. Now, I've got service in the fire department, I know what the fire department needs. I've got service in the law enforcement, I know what the law enforcement needs. Doesn't mean I'm an expert in either one, but the people that need to make the decisions are doing it, and everybody fighting over it isn't getting anything done. So back off, let the professionals make the decisions that need to be made. The public safety is what is at issue. Firefighters are putting their life on the line, police officers are putting their life on the line. The people that are in charge are going to do what's best for this city, and you got to leave it at that. Now, to make threats, to attack people personally, that's about the lowest scum things people can do. Back off, let things happen, and protect the city. The people will do that.
Thank you.
Eric Lee, 1199 Atwater Boulevard. Mayor, council. I'm actually gonna agree with some of what Jim said. He was right on about future needs of the fire department. That's a change. Jim and I agree. And Fred won't have anything to write about tomorrow, it's gonna be a boring paper.[628.29][628.29](laughter) Little levity. What I am up here for tonight is to ask you to start looking at district elections in Atwater. I think it's time that we district the town and start electing our council people from districts established, and we'll also probably have the mayor at large, but I think it's time that we start considering that in view of what Merced's done. We know it's coming, and I think it's something we need to look at, so I just wanted to make that suggestion. I noticed you're nodding your head, you probably already figured that one out, because you're a sharp lady, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anywhere else who wishes to come forward and speak?
Is it time on the consent calendar, or just on the...
No, this is, this is just from the, from the public. The consent calendar will have another time for that. Okay, with that, we will move on to the consent calendar. Notice to the public, background information has been provided on all matters listed under the consent calendar. These items are considered to be routine. All items under the consent calendar are normally approved by one motion. If discussion is requested on any item, that item will be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Is there any item, any councilperson who wish to remove an item for separate action?
Mayor, we would like to pull item four, item number four, off the consent calendar for just a couple of minor clarifications. We're not asking that it be continued, we're just asking that it be taken up separately.
For separate action.
Correct.
Okay, so we're gonna pull item number four for separate action. Is there any other items on the consent calendar that you wish to remove for separate action? Now is the time, Mr. Murphy, if you wish to comment on an item that's on the consent calendar. What? The items, yes, the items remaining on the consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Commenting on item number five...
Mr. Murphy?
Oh, yes, Jim Murphy, 262 Juniper Avenue.
Thank you.
Item number five, this came up last year, the water conservation program. It sounds great, we all want to save water, however, I don't think this is the way to do it. At that time, I had asked if the city had done an analysis on what compressing that many people into certain days and times would do to water flow and water pressures by neighborhood, and there was no study at all on that at the time. I don't know if that's been done or not. To me, the fact that we've raised the water rates, which I understand why, but to turn around and penalize people for using them is just something that shouldn't be done. You all know that I'm a plumber, I know about saving water probably more than most people in this room. If the intent is truly to save water, I think we ought to have incentives. Get the sprinklers system, make sure they're working properly, low-flow toilets, shower heads, things like that. I don't think penalizing people for using their sprinklers is the right way to go. I don't think we have the staff to police it unless we are planning on having neighbors inform on one another for that. I just think this is more government regulation we don't really need. If the idea is to really save water, then let's find a way to save water. If it's a way just to get more money out of the people of the city, then let's be upfront about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment on the remaining items that are on the agenda? On the consent agenda, I'm sorry, consent.
Connie Hunter, represent the Atwater Chamber of Commerce.
Address, Connie, please.
2132 Dwight Way, Atwater, California.
Thank you.
I, I want to ask, are you gonna put meters on homeowners, on the residents and the businesses? Is this in the plan eventually? Because, because, the reason why I'm asking this is because, coming from the Los Angeles area, everyone is on a meter, and we get charged for the water that way. So that's why I'm wondering what Atwater's plan is for this. Thank you.
You want to answer? City manager, you want to answer that question?
Sure. Connie, by 2025, everybody will be on meters. By 2025.
Item number, okay, we'll entertain a motion to approve the remaining consent calendar.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Mayor Potem Mooneyham.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bergman. Any further discussion? Call for the question. Bergman?
Yes.
Jeff Rivera?
Yes.
Mooneyham?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number four, separate action.
This is on for...
City attorney.
Sorry. This is on for second reading and adoption. Staff noticed one redundancy on page four, section 838050B, needs to be removed. We'll do that, we'll do that upon passage of the ordinance. It's a duplicate of what's in A, so subsection B at the bottom of page four needs to be removed. And then, that's a, that's more of, more or less a minor change. The other change, there's been a lot of contact from industry groups about the viability or usefulness of having businesses have to keep a log of the names and address and driver's license of people buying aerosol paint. We had a lot of contact in the last couple of weeks from trade organizations and lobbyists and attorneys for lobbyists, and pointing out that there are voluntary methods of achieving compliance with that that should be tried first. Staff agrees with that. Staff believes, and in talking with lieutenant, that we can pass the ordinance without that provision, which is subsection F, about three lines down or five lines down on page four, So staff is recommending as part of passage of the ordinance tonight that subsection F be removed, and that subsection B of 050 be removed. And with those minor edits, staff is recommending the adoption of the ordinance, and we'd certainly be willing to answer any questions from the council on that.
Any questions? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak? Councilman Jeff Rivera?
Yeah, the one question I had for the city manager, do we have in place that if somebody's unable to, whether it be a senior citizen or a physical problem, or somebody that's unable to take out graffiti, is there a system in place so that way we can have a nonprofit or some organization help them and assist them taking off the graffiti?
Yeah, we're working on that now with the civic organizations within the city, so...
Will that be in place by the time that the ordinance goes into effect?
Yes, it will be.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion. Oh, pardon me, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on the graffiti? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the number four as amended.
Move to approve item four as amended.
Okay, moved by Councilman Bergman.
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Potem Mooneyham. Any further discussion? Call for the question. Jeff Rivera?
Yes.
Bergman?
Yes.
Mooneyham?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries. Funding and budget matters. Item number six, treasurer's report of March 2014. Treasurer Heller.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmen. Before you have the treasurer's report for March 31st, and the bonds been paid.
Do we have any questions of the city treasurer? Councilman Jeff Rivera?
When is our next bond payment, and are all monies present accounted for in looking like the next bond payment?
We have one in May and one in June, but they're not that much. Not like the last one, 3.2 million.
And it looks, appears that everything will be all right to make both of those bond payments.
We have the cash, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll entertain a motion then to approve the treasurer's report as presented. Councilman Jeff Rivera?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the finance budget...
Treasurer's report?
Treasurer's report, yes.
Okay, move to approve the treasurer's report for March. Council, Mayor Potem Mooneyham?
I'll second that. After the vote, Mayor, I have a follow-up question.
Any other questions? Call for the question. Mooneyham?
Yes.
Bergman?
Yes.
Jeff Rivera?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries. Mayor Potem Mooneyham?
Thank you, Mayor. Question for the city manager. As has been well documented, there were several undocumented loans over a certain amount of time between the various enterprise funds, particularly the water and the sewer fund. Just looking at the statement of changes in cash balance, it looks as though some of those funds may be actually in the black before other funds. Is there any schedule to actually document and repay those enterprise funds that were borrowed once we're in the black?
Yeah, we're gonna be bringing it back to the council within the next 30 days, inter-fund loan policy and repayment policy, so we're gonna be working on that, probably within the next 30 days, we'll bring it back to council.
And there's gonna be a repayment plan potentially? Okay, thank you.
Slowly repayment plan, Mayor.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. City attorney reports discussing the, regarding the placing of a measure on the November 4, 2014 ballot, establishing term limits for the offices of mayor and city council members. The, we will not have the staff report, we will take, since we have public here who possibly wish to speak on this item, we will go ahead and have public comments on this item, but this item has been moved to May 12th. May 12th is the time in which this item will come before the council. But is there anyone out in the audience who wishes to speak on this? Please come forward.
Thank you, Mayor, Jim Price, 3467 Village Woods. I'm actually kind of surprised that I'm the only one that would come to address this, but nonetheless, I will. I am 110% for implementing term limits within the city of Atwater. Now, some people would obviously say that a term limit is judged by the voters, and it always comes down to the, to the election. There's one particular congressman, and I know this is a little out of the area of Atwater, but one particular congressman, a guy named John Dingle out of Michigan, and this guy went into Congress when I was six years old. I'm 63 years old today, and this guy has been there forever. And now he's looking to go and put his wife in his congressional seat. Now, you know, that's just over the top, and anybody that looks at the condition of Michigan right now would know that it's not in the best state of affairs. So I'm not gonna completely relate Atwater to Michigan, but it goes to the heart of the whole thing. Checks and balances. I believe that even though there are people that have put forth dedication to serve the city and to come forward with ideas that they believe would be good ideas to make the city function and have city services be maybe a cut above those of other cities, it makes, you know, makes me wonder about our own situation here. We've had council members throughout the years that came and were here for some time and, just for lack of a better word, went stagnant. It was just rubber stamping, the staff reports and this type of thing, and I think that in some respects, we can only look to the controller coming from Sacramento to say that the oversight that the city council would normally provide was lacking. So, you know, would I like to see this, you know, decided at the ballot box on a normal scale? Yes. But I think situations changed in this city. I think that the time is ripe right now, and I think that moving forward with the city, I think the city of Atwater and the citizens here have the right to go and vote on this measure in November, and vote that they have a voice in the government to implement term limits for council members and mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eric Lee, 1199 Atwater Boulevard. Jim, don't get too excited, but I agree with you again.[1555.83][1555.83](laughter)
Too? Wow. The building is shaking.
Doesn't mean we're going steady.[1561.46][1561.46](laughter) Frank?
Let's get it back in control here.[1568.46][1568.46](laughter)
This is gonna, how many years does a council person serve? Is it two?
Four.
Four. And mayor? Same? Four. I think that three terms, 12 years, is more than enough. I think when you bring your ideas to the city and to the people, I firmly believe that you can get everything you need to get done within that three-term period. I think it's important that we do that so it brings more people out, and more people will run for the council positions and the mayor position. We need new ideas in this city, and I agree that we can't have people who want to camp out in a position. I think it's a good thing, and I think it's something that this council really needs to consider, and I would like to see it passed. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this matter? Thank you very much. We will then move to item number eight. Reports and presentations from staff. Resolution authorizing...
Did they do it at the approval of the agenda?
Yeah, we did in approval of the agenda. Resolution authorizing submittal of the annexation application to the local agency formation commission of the Merced County, affirming the signal annexation scope and area, as the same project previously approved by the city council. Mr. Community Development Director McBride.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I do have a overhead I've put up for you here. Thank you. What this area here is demonstrating for you, the blue area is the Ferrari Ranch annexation area, and the green area is the area we're discussing tonight, the Sangal annihilation annexation. I did mark out two of the little properties that we could not take off that would not be part of this, so those are checked off. So those would be remaining as part of the Ferrari Ranch annexation. Just to kind of give you a sense of what's occurred here, as is explained in your staff report, we had previously approved this project some years ago, went all through the process, and it was hung up at the step, the very last step before it was recorded, by the county with the state. And there was an issue at hand over a fee for roadway improvements. We provided in your staff report a copy of the information that was shared with the prior applicant. The county wanted about $135,000 for off-site improvements, which the property owner was unwilling to pay, and so therefore it stalled out. Your conditions of approval, however, didn't have an expiration on them at all. They were approved by the planning commission or recommended by the planning commission, came to the city council, were also approved. We recently had an applicant that wanted to have the same exact area finalized again, and their engineering company looked at what we're working on, also discussed with Lafco, and we confirmed for ourselves as well that Lafco felt that it could be processed again if the city council were to provide an updated resolution. So my staff and I were always trying to be creative, helpful, and expedite things as quickly as we can, and so in this case, if we didn't have to go back through the entire approval process, we wanted to skip through that tonight and get your... we wanted to skip through that tonight and get your consent with the approval of the resolution to continue forward. It's a small annexation. As you saw in your packet, it's just about seven acres. The one point we would like to make is that we also would like for your input tonight on a policy for the remainder of the properties in the area. The reason being is if we start having interest for smaller applications, we're going to constantly have a moving target for the Ferrari Ranch project, meaning they'll have to constantly update legal descriptions and exhibits. We've talked about this one. We're not far enough along in the formal process that it creates any issues for them, and they understand this already had prior approval from the city council, so it's not a concern at this point. We would, however, also like to get your input on discouraging separate applications until such time as this entire project can be looked at comprehensively. I do know we have some people, mayor, in the audience tonight that are here to answer any questions. I saw Mr. Dwayne Andrews in the back row. He's here on behalf of the applicant. He and I have been working with LAFCO on this issue, and he can also answer any questions that the council may have tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Andrews, would you want to come up behind the podium, please? Councilpersons, questions of Mr. Andrews or Mr. McBride on this matter?
Could I say something before?
Go right ahead.
I wanted to thank Scott for bringing this to you tonight. We're kind of in a little bit of a hurry, and this did come through direction from LAFCO, and they just wanted to make certain...
Excuse me, Mr. Andrews, would you give your address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Dwayne Andrews, Golden Valley Engineering, four oh five West Nineteenth Street, Merced.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyway, this came from LAFCO. Since it had been about seven years since it had been before LAFCO, they wanted to make sure you guys were still on board. And we found out that the staff was at least on board, so this is the step we need to get back to LAFCO and get moving forward again. And I wanted to thank Scott again for helping us out, and the city manager was very kind to help out, so I'm hoping you still lend your support to this tonight.
Councilpersons, do we have questions of Mr. Andrews? Appears we have answered all of the questions.
Thank you very much.
Don't go too far.
I won't.
Sometimes we change our minds.
Oh, don't do that.
Yeah, I just... So, okay, so if we haven't any questions, are we ready for a motion? Is there anyone in the audience, Councilman Jeff Rivera?
You can go ahead and go to office.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this matter? Go right ahead.
Eric Lee, eleven ninety-nine Atwater Boulevard. This is exciting. This is really a big step because that piece of property is probably going to give us a gas station and maybe a few other things on a side of town where we really haven't had anything for years. And this is the first step of what's coming to Atwater. And I'm glad the council is looking at this, and I'm proud of Scott for what he's done to push this forward. And I, for one, think this is a great, great thing, and I hope to see more of this coming on that side of town because I think that's the area we're going to be growing in for a while. And it's fun to see what else is coming. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak to or against this item? Okay, are we ready to entertain a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number two seven five six dash one four.
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by... Councilman Jeff Rivera made the motion and seconded by Councilman Larry Bergman. Is there any other questions? Call for the question. Mooneyham?
Yes.
Bergman?
Yes.
Jeff Rivera?
Yes.
Ball? Yes. Motion carries. City attorney. Now, we have another question at the bottom of this. Provide direction to staff regarding policies that may affect future application within the Ferrari Ranch. How are we going to handle that?
I think, mayor, we could do it as simply as if we have other applications, we can just suggest they work with the Ferraris. We're going to really start kicking off the process for that project. You know, we have the contract awarded for the environmental consulting company. They're starting to assemble just a huge amount of information about the project area, about everything we're going to be working on, and we kind of need a kind of a clean slate. This is where we start from, and we don't want to really change things too much going forward. You know, the thing about the annexation, mayor, quite honestly, is once you do the process, it is a pretty time-consuming process. So we're getting to the point where if someone were to start fairly soon, they wouldn't have any much of a benefit, if any, than just waiting, and they would have a fairly decent savings for them to allow the Ferrari Ranch project to kind of assume the expense for the process. So I'm not sure that we would need a resolution. I think it's more of an issue of if the council's informed that that's going to be the approach that we would be taking if we had other applicants that might approach us about it, just so we're all on the same page.
So we're all informed that there might be others?
It could be.
Okay, so we'll meet that as it comes.
Exactly.
Thank you. Okay, then we move down then to item number nine. Mayor Potam Mooneyham?
Inadvertent, mayor, sorry about that.
I'm sorry, what? Oh, okay. That's all right, because I was going to call on you anyway. We have reached that point in our city council agenda where we're going to comments and requests from city council members, and we will start with Councilman Mayor Potam Mooneyham.
Thanks, mayor. First of all, I'd truly like to thank everyone who expressed their condolences at the loss of my father, Doyle Mooneyham, resident of these parts for seventy years. Don't want to talk too much about it, because I don't know if I can contain myself, but I would personally like to thank Joan for all of her help getting through the process. A lot of you don't know how special that woman is about this thing, so appreciate it. Also, I've heard lots of talk about the fire truck, about the beliefs certain people have, whether the boots on the ground, the police officers are the priority, and I think they are a priority, and I think they're getting priority treatment. I have lots of my own beliefs. I know there's lots of different beliefs out there. The one thing I believe in is I believe in that man right over there. I believe in Frank Pietro. And if he says that there is a... If he says it's being handled in an appropriate manner and it's appropriate to move forward in this manner, then I'm with him, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Larry Bergman?
Thank you, mayor. First off, I would like to give my sincere condolences to Councilman Mooneyham, and I would like to ask that his father's being named, the meeting be adjourned in his name as well tonight. I'd just like to let everybody know, weather's changing. We're expecting a huge change in weather this week, going from mid-seventies up to the high nineties. It's expected. That's a huge change for individuals. Usually bodies acclimate to weather over time. This is a very quick change, so I'd just like everybody to be cognizant of the change. They could, you know, very easily suffer some heat-related issues with their body not being acclimated in time, so I just wanted to bring that up. And the last thing is I would like to invite everybody, as well as this, I'm on the board of the Merced County Spring Fair in Lausanne. It kicks off Wednesday. It's a, we've got some great entertainment planned, so I'd like to invite everybody to Lausanne this week to enjoy the spring fair. Thank you.
Councilman Jeff Rivera?
Yes, I'd like to echo my condolences to Mr. Mooneyham. I'm glad you're back. Sorry under the conditions that you missed the last meeting, but our hopes and prayers are with you. It's a long haul, so anything that we can do to help you in that effort, I would be more than glad to help. Next up, I'd like to thank Castle Air Force Museum for allowing me to cook up their strawberry waffles this last Sunday, had a good time, and appreciate your invitation to me. And last but not least, I'd like to tell all the Catholics in town, congratulations, two more saints added. I know our prayer at the beginning of the meeting was by our Catholic representative, and he's very happy, and we had a little discussion, but congratulations on that. It's a once-in-a-lifetime event, so it's really nice to know that that has happened. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Connie Hunter and all of the persons at the Castle Air Museum for their wonderful breakfast, and I'd like to thank Councilman Jeff Rivera for representing the city of Atwater at the cooking. And was the other Rivera there also?
He was still sick.
He's still sick, okay. So we had Councilman Jeff Rivera as probably the best cook, so that was probably lucky for the people.
Mr. Bergman was there, too?
Oh, Mr. Bergman, pardon me, sir. Mr. Bergman?
I think I burnt less ones, but I teased Joe when he was here, so, but Mr. Bergman did an excellent job also.
Thank you, Mr. Bergman, very, very much, and my apologies for the oversight. I would like to also congratulate the Atwater High School baseball team. They won the Franny Onido Atwater Lions baseball tournament. It's the first time they've won since, I think it was fourteen years since they've won that tournament. And so they, and I want to thank the Lions Club, Atwater Lions Club, for all their efforts in putting that on. That's one of the longest-running baseball tournaments in the area for high school people, and so I just want to thank them for doing. I think it's about fifty-two years that they've been doing that. I could be mistaken on that. We did adjourn our meeting, our last meeting, in honor of Mr. Doyle Mooneyham. This meeting, we are going to adjourn it in memory of Michael Tanzillo. Mr. Tanzillo was an outstanding citizen of the city of Atwater. He served his family. He had served his community. He served on the Atwater Parks and Recreation Commission, and he served his country. He was thirty years plus as an Air Force Colonel. And so with that, we send our condolences to his family, and all of the memories of what he really was, an outstanding community member, and we will sorely miss Mr. Tanzillo. And with that, I adjourn the meeting.